...product of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, a moment of silence for our men and women who serve in the own forces at home and abroad, for our police and for our firefighters who protect us and keep us safe within our community, for first responders who have been on the job for almost a year now and working all day long, and I don't know what we would have done without them, and for those who were seriously affected by this pandemic. Thank you. And now we'll turn to comments by department heads and village administrators on Zoom this evening, and we'll begin with, let's see, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the consent calendar. I'd just like to mention I don't thank DPW and the Boston Department for the fine job they did on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for the storm. They did an excellent job getting the roads clear, and we had no trouble going to any emergency call. Go ahead.
Absolutely. They did an excellent job.
I agree with that, and Dominic, please let the guys know that we appreciate everything they've done.
You can see all of that snow, small mountains on the side. It was amazing. What a downfall we had. It was amazing, really. All right, and then so then we would move on to Chief Strisco.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. I have nothing on the agenda. I just want to remind the residents about the last snowstorm. It's homeowners' responsibility to clear the fire hydrants in front of their houses. The last several calls we've been on, we've noticed that a lot of hydrants are covered by snow and inaccessible. If we have a fire at a specific house and we can't find a hydrant or have to search for a hydrant, it just increases the time it takes to get water, to put water on the fire. So again, just to remind the residents, if there's a fire hydrant in front of your house, please clear a path three feet from all sides of the fire hydrant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, may I suggest that you might want to put in your column that we put notice of that out? I think a lot of people don't realize it. On my walks in the morning, I'm amazed, in the last day, the number of hydrants that are still snow-covered.
Really? That's an important thing to take into consideration. All right, let's see, I'm trying to remember this person. Mrs. Givaniello.
Thank you, Mayor. I also don't have anything on the consent calendar tonight, but we will happily answer any questions if you may have.
All right, if you have any questions for it, Mrs. Givaniello this evening? All right, if not, we will move on. Let's see, Mrs. Wu.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Tonight on the agenda, I have item number two, the adoption of the proposed budget calendar. Once again, we're proposing for public work sessions to discuss the 2021-22 budget and five-year capital plan. The department heads, we're working very closely with them and putting together the sensitive budget as well as with Mr. Swazi, so hopefully we'll have something ready to review with the Finance and Order Committee soon. Item number three is the annual tax sale for the outstanding tax liens. The date is being set for March 19th, and this year, similar to last year, the village intends to purchase all outstanding tax liens due to the COVID restrictions.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, no problem. So the village intends to purchase the eligible tax liens. Governor Cuomo put out a press release stating that if homeowners have hardship into COVID, that they can communicate that to the village, and we will not sell their tax lien until May 1st. So we are working on distributing that notice, and we will only purchase the eligible tax liens on March 19th. Item number four are termination payouts for several employees who left village service and the transfer funds. A few of these are for the elections that are upcoming, and the others are for the DPW area, which Mr. Swazi will speak about.
All right.
Mr. Wu, on number two, once we get these dates approved, we can just let the JCC know if they've got the CBRAC number.
Yes, we are in communications with CBRAC. They are determining the members, so I've been in constant communication with JCC. One of the questions that keeps coming up is whether the meetings will be held via Zoom. So of course, as we get closer to the dates, we will, you know, find out what the situation will be for that. We also publish in the paper, I'm sorry, we also publish the dates in the paper every week, both papers. Right.
Mrs. Wu, you were kind enough earlier in the week to share with the board apparently our review, most recent review by Moody's, and how they looked at our debt and the village finances. So in whatever detail you can, I'd appreciate very much if you could explain to everyone what Moody's said about our current fiscal situation.
Yes, so last week I had my ratings call with Moody's Investor Services. We had an extensive call. They had many questions regarding the village's finances. They focused in on the budgeting practices, the planning that we go through, and the long-term view that we take, especially with our capital projects and our debt service. So, you know, it was a very favorable call. They released their report this week, and once again, they assigned the village, they maintained the AAA rating with a stable outlook, and, you know, the report states, you know, the village's strengths with a large tax base, with strong wealth and income profile, structurally balanced operations, and strong reserves, and long-term financial planning. Right? So that's, they tout the good financial strength of the village. The report can be made available on the village website.
That's great to read that report. Makes you feel great. I noticed that they didn't, they will list things that might interfere with our performance, and usually they'll mention searchy-ary cases, and I noticed that they really didn't go too heavy on that this term. They just lightly brushed it and moved on.
Well, we had a large conversation about that. So a few years ago, tax searchy-ary cases were, you know, over a million dollars.
Yes.
And so over the last couple of years, that's seen an incredible decline. Last year was less than $100,000. This year, we're anticipating perhaps half a million dollars, if that. And the calendar looks very light for next year, again, another light year. So they actually mentioned that those cases have been decreasing in the last few years.
That's interesting.
Mrs. Wu, the only other comment I'd like to make is to thank you, and please thank all the people who work in your department, because accomplishing what Moody's said did not come by accident. It comes by a lot of hard work. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we will be selling the bands and bonds next week and closing on them the week afterwards.
I would like to also thank you, and Bob, you're the Chair of Finance, so thank you for the work you've done with us as well.
Believe me, I'm very entitled. Mrs. Wu takes all the credit. Her and her department, they did everything, you know.
It's a team effort.
Okay, yes, Trustee Johnnie.
Mrs. Wu, give me a little more detail. So these ratings are in connection with proposed debt issuances, correct?
That's correct.
So they are well aware of our debt levels and plans for debt. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they are well aware of our tax base. They are well aware of our changing tax base with losses from things like Lloyd Taylor or anything like that. They're well aware of that?
Absolutely.
And they still gave us a AAA bond rating.
That's true, and not only on our ratings call do they go into the debt that's already existing, we discuss long-term debt as well, expected long-term debt. We discuss bond resolutions that, for example, earlier in October, we had two bond resolutions done for projects that were deferred. So they take that into account as well, that we will be in the near future bonding additional projects. We discuss any large projects that may be on the horizon, you know, St. Paul's came up in the conversation. So they are well aware of the plans of the village. They have the five-year plan, the capital plan that the village puts together every year as well. And also, the other thing to note is if you take a look at the scorecard that Moody's uses to determine the rating, the debt ratio is extremely small as compared to other municipalities, other comparable municipalities. The village's debt ratio is incredibly small, and it comprises a smaller portion of the overall rating as well. They focus more in on the tax base of the village, and as they note, it is a wealthy tax base. So the debt ratio of the village is minor in comparison.
No problems foreseen for us paying our bills as they are due or in the future?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, don't we look to grow our tax base? Don't we kind of look for opportunities to grow our tax base? And does the Marriott pay taxes to us yet, or will they, and what, you know?
The Marriott was granted an IDA, so they paid pilot payments for, I believe, 20 years.
The Marriott does? Ah, all right.
How long have they been paying those pilots, Mrs. Wu? Haven't they been paying them for the last couple of years?
Yes.
Thank you.
So they would pay that for 20 years?
That's correct. And then they would go on the tax rolls.
Excuse me?
And then the property would go on the tax rolls for the current assessed value.
All right, any other questions? Any other members of the executive staff that would like to say anything or make a report? Did I cover everyone?
Village Administrator Ralph Swazi.
There you are. Okay, go ahead, Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lord. Welcome, everyone. First of all, I just want to say, as we've already said already, I want to thank the DPW Department led by Dominic and all the supervisors, the parking racks Department that's been in the warden suit department to keep our roads clear, parking fields clear, emergency services clear, snow during these, and this extraordinary storm, so thank you. Well done. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Wu and her team for their steady stewardship of the village finances. It's not as easy as it seems. It's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate it. First, I know the village is just easy as well. Mayor, on item 5F, there's a transfer from contingent for $15,042.07. This is to fund repairs to a mechanic's lift in the central garage that needs repair so he can keep using it to lift vehicles. There's also some damage to a couple of garage doors on the DPW garage. $61,000 to sanitation, traction services from contingent. This is to fund rubbish removal for the remaining fiscal year. There's been an excessive amount of garbage and rubbish coming out this year, most likely due to keep working from home during this COVID pandemic, and so we need funds there. $30,000, 5H, is for the water distribution system maintenance plant. We have, right now, we're in our slow pumping season, but the high pumping season will be upon us in a few months, and there are some repairs, there's valves and blowers and other mechanical pieces that we're doing during the slow season. So we have to ramp up. We are ready to go. Item 11, this is acceptance of the maintenance bond for the LPL fixtures on Franklin Stewart Avenue. Item number 12 is 12, 13, 14, or all, setting rates for three bins we use consistently, Atlantic wells and wired water. They are very active in our water pumping stations, all well sites, and our suit department, they do ordinary maintenance, and they are called upon for emergency as needed. Third one is core reelectric services. They provide electric services throughout the village for the same reasons, maintenance and for emergency. Number 15, this is for St. Paul's building stabilization work. There's a transfer of $2,000 to fund CMY, continued construction oversight. Mr. Beal is on call to see if I finish my update. If the Board has any questions I've asked, he adds some color to the work that's progressing there. The second bullet on 15 is for Westar Construction Room. This is a ratification of a $32,282 expense to the floor. As you walk in the main entrance, St. Paul's collapsed. So this is really to repair and shore up approximately 300 square feet flooring, so the work is going down safely. The third bullet is with Gordon Tommasetti. During the storms and during the high wind events we've had, it has been noticed that there is additional damage to flat roofs that wasn't part of the initial investigation. So this $15,000 change order is to have Gordon Tommasetti go up there, do a detailed investigation, put together, cost estimate for the repairs that will be necessary to, you know, to scale the building. So there will be a second step to this process and future agenda, hopefully the 23rd, or shortly, it's the 25th, if we don't make it by then. And then item 10, there are two for information only. We have our annual 2020 worst of all statement, H2M is being contracted for that $300,000. And then we also have semi-annual inspection of our in-ground storage tanks, storage tanks as required by the National Health Department, and that's $8,000. Their information only. That's my update, Mayor. If any questions, I'll turn over to Mr. Beal on item 15.
Ralph, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly. You said there was something about damage to garage doors. Can you elaborate?
There were, Donna Stancil might be in the room on Zoom today, so he can probably elaborate, but I believe the doors are not closing properly, and I'm not sure what the hardware repairs are needed. There was some appropriate, and this is to execute that, but I don't have details. But Donna, can you on phone?
Yeah, I'm here, Ralph. Yeah, one of the doors, one of the motors is totally in disrepair. The electronics don't go up and down on it, so it came down almost on a sanitation truck a week ago, and we couldn't utilize that, so the trucks are now backing out of the garage instead of pulling forward. And on one of the other doors, some of the hinges on the rails aren't sitting right off the wood, so they have to come in and repair those and try to set them up and replace all that wood and reset new rails and rollers on that door.
Didn't we replace the garage doors as part of the budget?
Yeah. Yeah, we replaced the garage doors on the shop, and we replaced the garage doors on the parks apartment garage. We didn't replace the DPW garage doors, the main doors, on the main power roof building.
We just re-garaged parts of the garage.
Is it time?
Trustee John?
We can probably get through another year on that. We are going to be looking into replacing those soon, because they are about 20 years old.
We've done the Fire Department Headquarters doors this fiscal year. We've done the parks garages, and we've done the candy shops. So this is the next set of doors that would have to be done. Thank you, Dominic.
Could I make a suggestion? That why don't you try and get a quote the next month, and, you know, let's figure out, really should it be, you know, sometime in the next eight months that we build it into the budget, instead of waiting for next October and they really collapse?
Will do.
But also, if we're going to go through the process of repairing, taking the doors down, you know, how much more incremental would it cost to replace them, if we're going to replace them anyway?
These are very large doors. They're very high, and there's quite a few of them. I think there's about eight on each side of the building, so sixteen total, and they're very large.
Okay, any further questions? All right, I think I'm always the trustee. Yes?
I'm sorry, St. Paul's.
My question is about the agenda items, would you like to give your general update?
Yeah.
Start with the agenda.
Yes, we both.
Okay, so by way of an update, the stained glass window removal bid package is out to bid. We input the insurance requirements between P2B's office and Irene's office that's behind us now, so we're able to finalize that bid package. That's out to bid. The bid walk through is next Wednesday. Bid should do back the 23rd with the anticipation of being able to make an award recommendation for your first March Board of Trustees meeting. After that, we will get the insurances and contract together with the intention of starting in April, and it's an eight-week process to get them safely removed, that those windows protected. The main stabilization contract from Westar is completed. As Ralph mentioned, sometime in November or so, when the lifts were up above the flat roofs, they took photos and noticed that there was actually a tropical storm these days, I think, and there were a couple of other wind events that blew some of the flat roofing off the roof. So we had recommended that Gordon Tommasetti come make an inspection and prescribe some repairs that we can put out to bid. With regard to Westar's change order, this is work that they did at their own risk. They started this because they opened the door one morning and the floor was in the basement. It had not been that way, obviously, when Gordon Tommasetti did their first review and put the report together. It had been settling slightly while the work was progressing, and one morning they found it in the basement. So they presented a much larger change order to me, which, you know, I told them they're not going to have anything until the Board of Trustees approved it. They're aware of that, and I negotiated based on the hours that they performed the work down to this 32 and change number that's before you tonight. I believe it's justified, however, it's up to you guys. And lastly, which Ralph didn't mention, we are seeking proposals for the Phase II environmental report, because we are at a point where even though there are some damage to the flat roofs, we could begin investigating the abatement. Designer Walker? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions? All right, then, let's take a look at the trustees' questions, or, yes, trustee Johnnie?
Yes, Mayor. I just quickly want to bring the Board up to date with regard to the National Grid project. As you know, National Grid has transmission lines on the North Shore coming down south here, eventually winding up at the gas plant on Stewart Avenue. As you know, this is a transmission line, which unfortunately does not allow us to have as much say in the matter as we would like. However, we've been talking to National Grid for the last year and a half. National Grid put something out on their website, which seemed to indicate that they were going down Arthur Street. That has not been, they have not got approval yet to do that. We have suggested to them in our, in conversations at the end of 2020 and early 2020, actually the end of 20, to, two alternative routes. One of those alternative routes requires us to take a look at Kellon Place to see whether that is in fact a public right-of-way that has been, our law firm has undertaken a look at that, is undertaking a look at that, and that would be taking a look at records that go back, as I understand it, to the 1930s and 40s. So it has taken us a little while, has taken the law firm a little while to find out for sure whether it is a public access route. If it is, we're going to suggest to National Grid that that's one of the alternative routes that they could use other than Arthur Street. We would anticipate that we will have further discussions with National Grid, and I've indicated to one of the owners of resident on Arthur Street that once we know what is going on, we will be the first ones to tell people on Arthur Street. There's nothing, everything that we're doing is to try to remove Arthur Street from the use for the transmission line. We're still in negotiations with them. They have been somewhat listening to what we have to say, so we will continue to do so. I just wanted to bring in the Board and residents up to date on where we stood. Thank you.
Will there be any meetings, type of meeting that we held originally?
I'm sure there'll be more meetings. Right now, it's a little premature to have a meeting until we have a better idea of the legal ramifications of whether Kellon Place is a public right-of-way or not, and then I think we'll have to have some more meetings with National Grid and move forward from there. So it's not going to happen today or tomorrow. I would anticipate within the next 30 to 60 days, we'll have some answers, and we'll see whether National Grid will be willing to change their thought process and see how they want to react.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from trustees? All right, let's move on to citizens' comments on agenda items. All right, if you have a question on the agenda material, please, please indicate. All right, Mr. Oros? Is that Bob Oros?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can I be heard? Yes.
Yes.
Good, great, thank you. I'd like to ask a question. Right now, I'm looking at almost $250,000 of war going to St. Paul's. When does, when does the stabilization work stop and the abatement begin? I mean, we could do stabilization from now to June state, but there's always time something else to do. So I'm just wanting to know when is that going to stop and when the abatement is going to begin?
Mr. Beal, do you want to answer some of them?
Yes, as I stated, the abatement process is technically begun, because we are seeking proposals from an engineer to, to do the report that would get us to the point where we can go and put together bid packages to get that out to bid. We're anticipating, we're waiting for stabilization to be almost complete before we start that process. It's undergoing. We're ongoing it now.
Is there any timeline involved?
Ralph, I would assume it's going to take as much as a month or two before we have someone on board, and then it'll probably take another four weeks to issue a report. So that big process. I received a proposal from an engineering firm, and with respect to doing my due diligence, I'm circulating to other engineering firms so they can give us proposals based on the same specifications, so that, you know, we get the best price for the work. So that is the process it'll take, you know, like Mr. Beal said, probably a month or so, you know. It's not like they're waiting for our request and we turn around in one or four hours. So I want to get at least five of the firms that I want to have, so that we have a broad spectrum of proposals, and I'll circulate those, Mr. Beal, as they come in.
Let me ask you, I mean, how do they, how do they come up with these proposals? Often have to go when they inspect the site and to figure out, you know, dollars and cents of what it's going to cost?
Well, that would be offered. The advantage we have is that the first engineering firm is very familiar with the site, and they've already, they've already been on the grounds, so their proposals are very specific, so the other engineering firms will be allowed to visit the site as well, but they also are starting from a specification template that's well-planned, so they could give us an order of magnitude number based on that alone, but I would encourage them to visit the site, so that...
All right. I can't see how I can do it without visiting the site. I mean, to do it from books and from past experience, it's not what we have here. And as the abatement, people look in into their building and try to ascertain the abatement, they're going to find more and more things that could be done to stabilize the building. And that's what I'm afraid of, that we're just going to go on and on and on with this stabilization.
Well, the environmental engineers will not be looking for structural repair errors and things along the stabilization route. I agree with you, the building will continue to deteriorate. However, the environmental engineers are not going to be looking toward that in these things. They're going to be identifying the contaminants and quantifying them. That's, that's what's in their scope for, or at least the package that's out to them.
Another thing, are you going to provide them with any, any studies that were done by past firms? That when it's in a building, it came up with the spreadsheet as far as a laundry list of things that need to be done? Or are they going to do it from just day one, without any, without any first reports or whatever it's about?
Because of you, Ralph. Yeah, that's a, that's a fair question. I would think that the public record on the history of St. Paul's prior to this project is on our website. So we would, I think that'd be, I think we could wise to point them to that so they can read up on the conditions that existed at that time. They may have changed, may have got worse, but that's a fair, fair question. I'll, I'll make sure that they are aware of that data that does exist. Although I cannot fill it with all the detail, but I know there's a large history of St. Paul's data on the website.
Now, not only that, in the past, I've given you copies of reports from past surveys of that building. And to the degree of what they found was wrong with that building. And the last report was almost a decade ago. So between then and now, obviously, there's more damage to that building. So there's even more on top of what those reports indicate. And I'd like to make sure that these people get that report and follow up on it and add to whatever else they find in order to cover for the more true number, rather than start something and keep billing us again and again and again and again.
And I, like I said, to Oros, it's a fair question. I believe within the scope of the profession, they probably have a pretty good idea of what they're looking for. But to your point, I will provide any information and point them to the direction of the website where any legacy information exists.
Okay, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Oros. Next speaker?
Yes, this is Steve Martin. In regards to the new damage that was found on St. Paul's that was caused by the tropical storm, would that expect to be reimbursable by FEMA?
Mrs. Wu?
Yes, we can include that cost in our request for FEMA reimbursements. We are right now in the process of gathering all those costs and discussing that with them. And they're going to be coming in potentially and doing this like.
Good, very good. Next speaker?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker?
George Salem.
George Salem?
Oh, George, wait, he's got on YouTube. He's got a view, so.
George King.
Okay, here, pal?
Gotcha.
Yes, I got you.
Okay, I have a series of questions about the upcoming elections, which are featured in.
That's not an agenda item, George.
Consent calendar has the election items on it.
George, that's not.
So what, what's his, what's his question?
The consent calendar has, has.
All right, you have an answer.
Go ahead, Mr. Salem. What is your question, George?
All right, I'd like to ask a series of questions and then throw it back to you guys. The, item 5A says you're buying an extra voting machine for the election for $300. I'd like to know how you decide on how many voting machines you need? And what is your assumption on the number of voters that will show up in person on March 16th? And to what degree have you considered potential several thousand? Number of voters well above the usual 20, 200 to 300 of past elections? And if you consider that there are long lines possible waiting to vote outside of Village Hall in bad weather and six feet of virus separation? In course, there's nowhere to protect yourself from the elements. You're outdoors at Village Hall, it could be raining or snowing or cold. So my bottom line is, are you considering more hours to vote at Village Hall to spread out the demand from just 9, from noon to 9:00 PM? And would you consider an additional venue for voting, such as the Field House, which has much better qualifications in terms of space and parking and number of machines?
All right, we can take a look at that.
Any answers to the question?
Can you speak up, George?
Yeah, I, when you say, you'll get, I would hope you can get some comments.
Well, you just, you just gave us the point there, where the Karen, the Karen, Karen, or Peter.
Stop, 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 wait.
Can you speak to this?
Well, I can note that on this evening's agenda is also a memorandum of agreement with the County Board of Elections for the rental of machines. They do have recommendations in their Schedule A of that document for how to determine the proper number of machines and subject to the board's approval. The number of scanners would be three. And so-called ballot marking devices directly would be one. There is a cost factor force in the memo. It's not exorbitant, but it's up to the board how they wish to proceed. But I believe that that is the clerk's recommendation based on conversations with the Board of Elections.
So is the answer then that you added one to the normal? You had three in the past, now you have four machines?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that as fact, Karen? Yes?
Yes.
That was a yes, George.
Okay, and then what about several thousand people potentially voting as opposed to two or three hundred in the past?
I think that, I think that you couldn't, that we looked into and set up this article, George.
They have nine hours. They have nine hours to vote?
They had nine hours in the past, but you haven't made any increase in capacity to handle several, multiple additional voters? So I'm just, I'm concerned that there'll be a catastrophe of people standing outside.
There's also absentee ballots.
Going home and saying, I'm not going to vote. Yeah, I know this absentee ballot, but that's, that's definitely something very.
People.
Well, one of, one of the things we could do, George, is, one of the things we could do is we could think about your suggestion. And we could think about possibly maybe putting up a tent or something else like that. So that this way, when people are coming to vote, they won't be exposed to the elements. We could, we could think about that. It's a good point.
What about, what about the Field House, which is such a large facility and would be much superior to Village Hall?
All right, we can look at that.
I don't think so.
No, we can, that's.
No, it's already said.
All right, okay. No, I'm afraid we're too far in.
Didn't notice have to go out, the, the, Mrs. Wolf?
By law, yes, and we were ready.
And then.
All right.
Right, but the tents, we certainly could look into the tents.
What about an expanded day on the, on 13th of March? Could you start at 8:00 AM?
Can't do it.
No, I believe the hours have already been published.
And it can't be changed?
No.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Next speaker? Any further questions on that agenda? Thank you. In that case, we'll move on and we will, I'll ask for a motion to, I'll speak about the public hearing. We have a motion, we have, due to the fact that Garden City News did not publish the village's notice of public hearing on the January 21st edition of the paper as requested by the village, the name of this proposal will now be entitled Parking. We are going to set the day, the hearing for February 23rd, 2021. And the name of the proposal will now be entitled Parking Non-Operational Vehicles in Residential Districts. Can I have a motion to, with that, trustee Donnie and a second, trustee Delaney, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and so that was a unanimous vote. Approval of the minutes, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of January 14, 2021.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Okay, Steve McCrinos, trustee McCrinos, and a second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Bolbrook, and then all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that was a unanimous vote. We're going to move now to new business. Under the formal agenda, we are going to set a date for a public hearing. And that would have to do with storage of construction materials and construction equipment on residential property. Would any one of the audience have questions about that? Any questions on that topic? If not, we're just going to move ahead. And can I please have a motion to do that? Trustee McCrinos and a second. How about trustee Donnie and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so that's a successful motion. And now we are going to set another, a third public date, hearing date for the Village of Garden City's plan with regard to the Governor of the State of New York's Executive Order 203 entitled New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. I'm going to say a few words about this, that on June 12, 2020, the Governor of the State of New York issued Executive Order 203 entitled New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. Executive Order 203 directed local governments, entities with police agencies to perform a comprehensive review of cultural police force deployment, deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, and develop a plan to address the particular needs of the community served by such police, that police agency, and to promote engagement to force to trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportionate policing of communities of color. Whereas the mayor, the trustees, the Commissioner of Police, together with the community stakeholders, have developed a plan after comprehensive review of existing police force deployment, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices. And the proposed plan will enable the Garden City Police Department to continue its robust, community-oriented policing strategies while enhancing efforts to avoid racial disparities in policing. And also, in accordance with the mandates of Executive Order 203, the guidance provided by New York State, this draft plan was published on January 22, 2021 and made available to the public here. It is on our website. It's very easy to find it. Information about it is right on the first, the homepage. And I would advise all of you to read it, all of residents in the community. It's, this is an important event. We really have responded very, very strongly so far. I would say Commissioner Jackson, do you agree with that? And we want you to come onto the website, find the document, read it, think, let us know. It gives you instructions on how to respond to us after you have looked it over. So we want you to take a good look at it, and we want you to make some decisions. And if you're thoroughly satisfied, that's fine. But if you think that you have some thoughts that perhaps were not, might have been slightly overlooked, then we would like that dialogue to go on with the entire community. So may I have a motion to resolve all of this? Trustee Donnie and a second, trustee Foley, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passed unanimously. And so now we'll return to, I think that, that takes care of all of that. And then I could ask, at this time, a motion to approve the consent calendar.
They are like to take something off the consent calendar or.
Go ahead.
Either take something off the consent calendar or get an explanation of item 17, where we stand with Revel. Are they in compliance as we requested or?
Oh, could you speak to that, Chief Stago?
I, I think.
And also, Giuseppe and Mrs. Stago also would be in on that. Can you, or we, have they pulled everything up to par?
Okay, mayor, just an update on that. I did send out an email this afternoon. Although they made great efforts to try to comply and to remedy, they are still not complete with those items. So I suggested to pull it off.
Don't on this.
And defer to next meeting. And hopefully they can address the other issues that we have.
All right, then we are all going to remove that from the consent calendar.
I think we needed, we need a temporary permission to let them keep operating. We ran into this problem two weeks ago. We need to do a temporary.
So by, so by next, yeah, by next meeting is February 23rd. So then shall we agree that, give them a temporary extension until February 23rd?
Yes.
And then what we can do is we can then, you'll then, at that point, you will, Giuseppe, you will then have gone through everything with them and you'll bring us an update of where we are.
That's correct. I'll perform with along with Dominic a final inspection and then we can release.
And also working with the chief as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
We have it.
I got your recommendation, so.
How do we do that, Mr. Beal? We need to go off. There are several options. The board can indicate that it is authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the current agreement, extending it solely until the next February 23rd meeting. That would be one option. And then assuming Revel signs it, there would be a continuation of the agreement. That agreement continues to allow the village to terminate the agreement should Revel not be in compliance. So should there come a time that the staff believes that they're failing in their efforts to cure, a recommendation could be made to the mayor and even if necessary, a special meeting of the board of trustees to disallow continuation. However, the most straightforward method of doing this would be to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment extending the current, the expired agreement until February 23rd.
All right.
Mayor, I would, I would make a motion that you have that authority and we do it that way.
All right.
I'd make that motion if somebody would second it.
I'll second it.
And all of those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. All right, so do we do that right now or do we?
Do we just do it?
Pass the rest, oh, that's, that's, right. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent count, the rest of the consent calendar? Trustee McCrinos and a second, please.
Can I, can I, one question?
Yes.
Or side? Should we, if the theory is we may want to get tents or something, should we add, you know, two grand to the election cost just to have it to prove that we can just do it?
That's a good point. Because what, what Mr. Salem brought up was that if in the event we did have a larger crowd, when the people come into the Village Hall, which we're going to maintain as a voting site, the bottom line is they would be exposed to the elements. So one of the things we could do is set aside, as Brian has suggested, maybe $2,000, which would enable the village to purchase temporary tents that we could put up there for election days. This way, as the people came, it would be large enough to be able to allow people the space to comfortably vote and then not be exposed to the elements.
Okay, so we vote on that right now?
We'll probably rent them, I believe. No, we'd rent them, we'd rent, yeah, we would rent them, that's all. Yeah, we would rent them.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, transfer. There, yes, I believe a, a resolution transferring a sum of money to the account for elections, together with authorization for you or your designated execute an agreement for the rental of a tent for contingency in bad weather.
Okay.
There's such a, such a motion.
Well, I would, I'd like it to cover in case Karen decides you should get another machine, you know. Let's just make it generic. Additional expenses related to elections in the event, you know, it's determined we get the tents or other items such as additional machines. That way it's covered by.
Yeah, let, let's not put a dollar number on it in case it costs one, $2,000 for a tent.
Yeah, let's not put a dollar number on it in case it costs more than $2,000 for an additional machine, whatever she needs. Within reason.
You might, I have a large enough number, but I would recommend that they give a number.
Let's say $5,000.
Put $5,000.
Let's $5,000. Yeah, make it $5,000. That's way more than enough than what she needs.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
The motion then would be to transfer $5,000 into the election account contingent for Karen as the election officer to determine that additional election expenses were needed, such as, but not limited to, additional voting machines and/or tents to guard against bad weather.
Karen, is, Karen, Drisethi, is that enough?
Yes.
That's enough? Okay. Yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, trustee Delaney moves that and, and a second, trustee Donnie and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, aye. And we, that was a successful motion. All right, so now we will try to approve. Am I correct?
Exactly.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have a motion.
Okay, trustee McCrinos and a second, trustee Foley and all those in favor?
Aye.
I say aye, and that was a successful motion. And now we will move to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Do you have anyone who would like to speak? Okay, go ahead. Name and address? Is he muted or something?
He's unmuted himself.
Bobby, I'm muted, sorry.
No, you're not muted, can't hear you, Bob. Bob, I'm getting muted.
There you go.
There you go.
Hey, hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Listen, I've been just, I've been doing a little, looking around here as to this contaminant that we try to get rid of in our drinking water in New York. Are we the only ones doing this?
We're doing this?
Are we the only one doing it?
No.
No, it's yours. The New York, the New York level is very aggressive, but other states are doing this as well.
All, all states, all states are doing this?
No, it's not, it's, it's not a federal level. It's a, it's a state-by-state initiative. I believe New York is, Jersey is, I'm not sure what other states. But it doesn't even matter what anyone else is doing. It's lower than New York.
It's pretty much New York.
The 120 oxy issue is not just isolated to New York.
Right, it's nationwide, probably, probably worldwide.
But, but New York and maybe New Jersey, the only ones that, that are being forced by the EPA to do something about?
No, 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 New York State set levels and we're trying to comply with New York State levels that were set for the 120 oxy.
Their government has not set this level as New York State and I'm not sure about New Jersey, but I believe I heard they were also under a mandate of some sort, maybe different terms.
Well, who's setting these mandates? The EPA?
No, each state.
Each state, each state sets their own level.
One municipality within the state is setting these.
No, to New York State. New York State, the state government.
Department of Health. New York State Department of Health.
The Department of Health, that's, that's an answer. Just say, say New York State, it could be anybody. Thank you.
Anyone else? Susan, what?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, say your name, please, and address.
Walter McKenna, 67 Hilton. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Swazian and the Department of Public Works for addressing my comment from the last meeting whereby they put the stripes in the crosswalk on Stewart Avenue. It was very helpful and I appreciate you doing it so quickly. My other question is with regard to the, the comment to that 1.4 dioxide. Can you give us an update on what wells have been remediated and what work is going on there in terms of, you know, how much more is to be done in the village?
Oh, I can give you a quick rundown, a little summary. We have 10 wells in the village, nine of which can operate concurrently. So right now, wells 10 and 11 have, have the system put in place and tested. I believe New York State has approved it. They're doing some final performance testing before it goes online. There's still some permanent construction at the site to house the building so it can heat during winter in the site. But those are minor issues compared to the overall build. Also, wellhead and being rehabilitated and generators to handle new flooding loads at these sites. That'll be the case in, I believe, parts of the sites. Well 7, which is, is also at very close stage of completion. In fact, we're probably going out to bid tomorrow for the permanent construction to enclose those facilities. Wells 13 and 14 are, all these stuffs in place. I believe the GAC filters, granulated activated carbon filter systems have been updated and that's going to be in testing soon. And we also are, a permanent structure has been designed and approved by the golf course. Wells 15 and 16 excavation is going on now. That is the biggest project in all, but it's reading tributal, like him, the pumpkin season, heading pumpkin season. And lastly, there's 12, wells 12 and 8, which are in almost final design and construction is imminent on those. And there's one other well, well number 9, which is, is below the level, it's at the halfway mark. But according to New York State Department of Health regulations, it is actionable. In other words, we have to bring treatment to it, but we can wait till the spring to do that. Well number 8 is also below, but it's on the cusp of being actionable, so. So we'll be, we'll have, we should have all of our wells, or eight of our nine wells online by June. We might have one that is just below and we'll, we'll do it during the off season.
Thank you very much. One other question. Congratulations, Mr. Wu, on the accolade that you received in the past as well as the great rating from Moody's. With regard to, I've asked the question in the past with regard to the reimbursement for the funds, the community funds for the park and all. How is that going and have you received any reimbursement yet?
Yes, Mr. McKenna, thank you very much. Yes, we, the village actually received the first reimbursement in January from the community fund in the amount of $850,000. And we are in the process of submitting another request for about $125,000. The reason we have to wait is because they require full documentation, the invoices that are paid by the village as well as the canceled check. So we have to wait until all that is completed before we can submit reimbursement. And then that takes, that process takes a few weeks to actually receive a check. But we already started receiving reimbursement on that project.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
Mr. McKenna, I just want to add something on the 120 oxy. We're, we're in the process of finalizing a matter that we're going to be sending out to residents to provide an update on where we are in terms of the remediation of 120 oxy. So just to give you a heads up on that.
I appreciate that very much. And I must say, over the past few meetings, the information provided by, you know, all department heads as well as the discussion has been very, very interesting and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Next speaker?
Hello?
Yes.
This, this is Susan Loraca, 164 Wellington. I have a couple of questions regarding the Third Track. I'm noticing along with a lot of other people, the butterflies and flower artwork happening all over this nation. Did the trustees on the Third Track Committee know about this? Because I don't remember anyone showing that in any of the renderings. It's very out of place for our village. And from what I understand, I think they're planning on putting these murals on the underpass, which I've noticed at New Hyde Park and Corporate Avenue, they just have nicer sound walls than we do and no artwork on the underpasses. So I would like an answer on what's happening there.
Sure, the, the, with regards to saying glass, that's, that's their artwork. It's their property. If you put one of the glass beams on there, do not have to, you know, tell us what we're familiar with.
Well, in the pictures, it looked like, you know, there was clear glass, you know. So I would think that they would have to tell us. It does not fit in our village. It doesn't fit in the residential neighborhood. And I would think that you, you know, would be able to speak with them since, you know, we do have a Third Track Committee.
Yes, unfortunately, that's very difficult now given the pending litigation.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, I think that it's, you know, you really dropped, you dropped the ball on the project to begin with. The polls are up. Has the village done anything about looking into any, any problems with all the wires that are putting up? Are there going to be any health studies done? Because I don't think, since we didn't know about them, I don't think anything was done beforehand. It's something that the residents, you know, are very worried about.
Again, I can't comment on the polls given the pending litigation. To answer your question, there are no murals being put in or painted up underneath the, the Nassau Boulevard in the past.
Okay, well, that's, I, I hope, I hope that there won't be too in the future.
And with regards to the sound wall, the sound walls were something that was selected by the POAs. We had given samples to the POAs and they chose that pattern.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, because the other ones are much nicer, but anyway. All right, well, hopefully we'll hear something on the litigation soon.
Thank you. Next speaker? Are there any further speakers this evening? All right, so now. A motion to, the executive session to discuss real estate. And may I have a motion for that, please? Trustee Delaney and a second, trustee Foley and all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everybody.